Okay, let's call to order Monday, October 7th, special hearing on the dune management plan. I need an approval of the agenda before we can start.
So moved?
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Yeah, I'm gonna read my rules. We're continuing our series of public hearings before the city council on the four dune management update amendments. And this will be our final and last public hearing. If there's time this evening, we will probably move to deliberate, I'm not sure. It is on the agenda for tomorrow night also, for us to start talking about it. Okay, so our public protocol for our hearings, if you would like to speak, please place your name and address on one of the sign-in sheets at the doors or being circulated and check the box confirming your interest to speak. You will be given three minutes to speak at the discretion of the mayor and my new little sand clock. Time limit is three minutes. I will start the sand clock after you have finished giving me your name and address. Groups or their representatives will not be given extra time to speak, so representatives from those organizations should consider this in their presentations and divide the speaking responsibilities. In the past meetings, we have started with the two representatives from the groups and then moved on. And I go down the list as you have signed in, so everybody has a turn. If you wish to pass, you may pass. I will ask again after we've gone through the list once. If you do not wish to speak at all, that's fine. Individuals will be permitted to speak once per public hearing session, although the mayor and city council reserve the right to allow individuals to repeat within the consideration to the agenda. This last little bit is kinda new. We understand that some of you have questioned whether a PowerPoint presentation, written or collected items, could be submitted with your testimony this evening. As much as I would like to witness a three-minute PowerPoint, I'm gonna say no on that. If you have supporting evidence during your testimony and you wish to push that in, a photograph or the written version of your testimony, that will be received. Obviously, it's all within the three minutes, so we're keeping this as fair and even as all of the past meetings that we've had. And of course, we thank you for coming and giving your oral testimony. Before we begin, the public comment, I'm gonna ask Jeff to go through his presentation again for those of you who have not been present in the past presentations. Jeff?
All right, thank you. All right, that's better, okay. I briefly wanna cover, for those that haven't been part of the process yet, what this is about and try to give a little synopsis over the next few minutes here. And so, this is, I think, the fifth or sixth public hearing we've had on the process. We started out with a scientific workshop on some of the materials, and so I just wanna frame this. It's basically about four documents, which started out with an update of our science with the Allen Report, and that was authored by Dogami, and then the four dune management plan, which was drawn up out of that. The comprehensive plan policies are a part of that update, and then at down and around the 10,000-foot level, what I work with daily is the zoning ordinance, which pertains to someone who's coming in with grading plan or a maintenance plan or remedial grading. And so, to give you kind of a framework of the Allen Report, I can't present that full document, but I do wanna just kinda hit some of the highlights of what that brought up in the discussion at the planning commission stage and then of those further documents that were drafted. It is basically the movement of sand in the Cannon Beach littoral cell, and he had broken that down into 10 different segment areas. And as you can see from this map here, the red areas are the ones that are losing sand, the green areas are ones that have over a 10-year span from '97 forward, increased in sand accumulation. That plays out in the other diagrams that are within the, and findings within that report that show that mainly to the south, the sand is being moved from the south to the north, and that's mainly done through seasonal winds, the majority, and also by the tides and the pool of the water. And the, this slide shows that areas and seasonality and how much is drawn by that winds and the, mainly in the wintertime frame. So I wanted to kinda give a presentation that would capture that movement of sand, and if you can look at that double, what we know as like a double dump truck load, that double dump truck load, it would take about 10,000 of those double dump trucks to move what has been moved over the 10-year timeframe up into that Chapman Point area of the beach from the Allen Report findings, which equates to about 500 of those double dump truck loads per year over that 10-year span, or about 10 of those double dump trucks per week. And so, the staff report, kinda what I wanted to get into through this, is that they're gonna, the plant, the planning commission passes on recommendations, and with that recommendations, then it's up to the city council to choose through the criteria under 1786-70A, and then also under the comprehensive plan policies and statewide planning goal 18, they have to be in agreement with those to pass any changes to these documents. So municipal code section 1786-70A really basics, basically boils down to two points. Does it agree with our comprehensive plan, and then it doesn't ask anything really more from our services. The comprehensive plan policies that are influenced have to do with sand dune construction, four dune management policies, and then the remedial grading elements. One thing I'll point out with that is really basically about four maintenance areas, which are haystack, downtown, Breakers Point, and presidential areas. Statewide planning goal 18 is the beaches and dunes section, there are elements of that that play into this, and we, most of that is handled at the comprehensive plan level. Policies and procedural questions, you can handle this really kinda two ways of going through this. Once we get to deliberation, we might wanna go document by document through this, or we might wanna go topic-based, as kind of the earlier reports have been, the staff reports, where we go by topic areas. Grading for views, the planning commission found within their, really, what's often been called the number-one question, the big question is, well, if we're gonna do this, the planning commission stated that it's really up to, do you wanna do dune grading at all, or do you want to not do dune grading at all? And so, it's really, that's the basic questions that them would throw you into the rest of the document, and that's how I kinda broken up the staff report as well. So the main areas are vegetation, we heard from Dr. Hacker in the science report, that different dune grasses capture grass, capture the sand differently, build different types of dunes, steeper and shallower dunes, and some do it more aggressively than others. There's also a fourth type, there's the European and the American beach grass, and there's also a new hybrid that is now popping up along the Oregon coast, and each of these can be found within our littoral cell. Seasonality, so seasonality plays into it. What I wanted to also point out with this slide is that I said this works from the comprehensive plan changes down to the four dune management plan, but also down to the zoning level change. That language works its way through each one of those different plans, but also through each one of those different levels, and the specificity of each plays into that as well. Wildlife is also, razor clams became an issue, and how far the depth of that sand could be spread out after it was graded, and that became part of the discussion of the planning commission with some recommendations on that. Slope is also, 25 to 33 percent slope is the recommended, we've heard different things from Dogami and the planning commission and others on that. Beach access was also a point that was brought up on whether the city is required to provide beach access, and Bill Kabeisman, our city attorney, has spoke about that, and if anyone has further questions on that, I'm sure he's happy to speak on that. Permitting, something that's near and dear to my heart, is that at least our zoning ordinance with these changes should be very clear on how someone who comes in for a permit, if they need to do it every year, what those permit requirements should entail within that, and then what monitoring and what will they be followed up on, who pays for that, and all those details should be in this upon your review. And I think that that's further on that. Mowing was, and trimming was one thing that the planning commission has taken out, which was in there previously, currently, and so they have recommended that we take out that provision. Property values also came up at the planning commission's phase, and they deemed that that was not within their purview of the ordinances. I just wanted to throw these in, that if anyone hasn't read all the materials, we will be testing on that, but no. There's up to, I think, like 136 public comments. I really, first off, appreciate everyone coming out, everyone staying involved in this process. It's been a lengthy process, but it's, we have gotten great feedback and a lot of great material out there, and it's up to them to make these tough decisions, look through those documents. Every exhibit's up there, if someone sees something or they believe they had sent something in and it's not there, please let us know, we will investigate that. And that can be found on the website by simply clicking on the issues there, it takes you to the four dune management, and then you will see each one of those exhibits listed. And that's all for me. These other slides are if you go into deliberation tonight. Thank you.
Bill, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Not really, this is, you know, the fifth time we've been through this, you've explained the time limits and the limitations on testimony, you know, if questions come up, I'm more than happy to answer.
Thank you. I believe also, somebody mentioned that there was a representative from State Parks, so if we have a question for State Parks, there's a hand back there, so that would be available. I don't, that would probably more likely for us if we have a question during deliberation. Thank you for being here, though. Okay, I'm going to start going through the list, it's lengthy, so Diana, would you like to start?
My name is Diana Turner, 3524 Northeast Clicatatt Street, Portland, Oregon, 97212. Hello again, I bet you guys are just sick of hearing from us. Well, one thing I'm confident that we've convinced you all of is that this is a decisive, divisive issue, but more importantly, we've also shown you that you have a clear and strong mandate to end dune grading for views. This mandate comes from your local constituents, which you first saw with the 200 signature open letter to you in the Gazette, and you have it with the regional and national signatures you've seen on our online petition, which is currently at 1,621 signatures and counting. All of these people know that this is an important environmental issue. This intersection between state and private property and the built world and nature is of great environmental concern, here in Cannon Beach and beyond. This is why Cameron LaFayette and Orca have been supporting us these five years, and why Cameron today is making a six-hour round-trip drive to speak to you for three minutes, because it's important. This is why Surf Rider Foundation also supports the Friends of the Dunes and has me write about this issue for their membership newsletter, and why they've asked me to write again and share your decision with their membership. This is why last week I was contacted by two regional media outlets. This is more importantly, why you have seen locals who've lived here since the 70s show up to these city council meetings and give testimony for the first time, because it's important. You hold with this decision a beloved national resource in your hands, and like Woody Guthrie wrote in the 1930s, "This land is your land, this land is my land." From California to the New York island, from the Redwood Forest to the Gulf Stream waters, this land was made for you and me. Cannon Beach has the opportunity to lead their coastal neighbors into a more responsible stewardship of public land and our ocean and duno ecosystem. We have signed petitions, written letters, given testimony, and now warbled. In these ways, we have stood together to be counted, to be heard. This is how democracy is supposed to work. You have a clear mandate to end dune grading for views. Please execute that mandate for the good of this community and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce, did you wanna come up and say?
Pass.
You'll pass? Thank you. Okay, then, I'm gonna go from the top of the list. Frank Patrick?
I'm passing.
Colleen Toomey?
No, thank you.
No, thank you. Iris Dinette?
No, thank you.
Karen Hadley?
Hello, my name is Karen Hadley, I live at 398 Seventh Street, Cannon Beach. I just wanted to clarify a few things, because it seems like the people who are in favor of grading the dunes have put forward some erroneous or misleading facts. Somebody spoke about Singapore, Michigan, of which I'm from the west shores of Lake Michigan, far away, and so I wanna clarify that, and that was that Singapore, Michigan did not get inundated by the dunes and therefore become extinct. Although it is a ghost town now, it is actually one of the casualties of the four great fires, Chicago, Holland, Peschigo, and Manastee, that ravaged the Midwest in 1871. After the trees swept through those areas, Singapore, which was a lumber town, supplied the lumber for those three towns, and they basically cut down all of their trees, which allowed them to be inundated by sand. So it was greed and man seeking to do what he will with Mother Nature that led to the inundation of those towns with sand, not the sand doing what it will. And I also wanna point out that Sleeping Bear Dunes, which is a national public park, lies along the west shore of Lake Michigan, and it is advertised as a treasure and an attraction, and it is used to invite people to the coast or the shore of Lake Michigan. It was rated as the most beautiful place in America by ABC. So contrary to what people who wanna grade our dunes have said about our dunes not being beautiful, many people consider dunes to be quite beautiful. The dunes, the Sleeping Bear dunes have been getting smaller over time. So again, there is a difference in the way dunes respond to weather, and those dunes are getting smaller. Do we want our dunes to get smaller? Sleeping Bear has gone from 234 feet down to 103 feet in less than 40, 50 years. So do we want our dunes to go down that much? What will happen when the tsunami comes, in the next 50 years, they say? So I just wanted to clarify those two really, I think, important points about the misconception or the misrepresentation of facts. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Steinen? No show?
No.
Pass, okay. Oh, boy. Tabia Gussen?
Pardon?
Tabia.
Tabia, okay.
G O Box 19, Cannon Beach. "Please consider no dune grading for views in Cannon Beach. How is it possible that a town with strict laws to protect trees and that forbids feeding animals can be in favor of destroying the beaches? I can't wrap my head around that disparity. We are ignoring why John Yon and Tom McCall worked to preserve the beach. The dunes don't belong to individual property owners. You can't see the full impact of our magnificent ocean by looking out the window. There has been disingenuous discussion of replanting dunes to attract the endangered snowy plover, demonstrating a lack of understanding dealing with endangered animals. U.S. Fish and Wildlife is working to list puffins as endangered in Oregon. The puffin population has decreased dramatically, and Haystack Rock contains the second-largest portion of the remaining puffins. Enough other populations are approaching that level. The time to address requirements related to declining and endangered populations is now. A plover nest requires that a designated portion of the beach be cordoned off, a minimum of 50 feet in each direction. Beaches with a nest are restricted but not usually closed during nesting season. Some of the restrictions are no walking within specific guidelines, no dogs on the beach, even with a leash, vehicles, bikes, kites, drones, no camping or fires, and no horse riding. Cannon Beach tourists are habitually unwilling to follow current laws and requirements, much less these restrictions. When I worked at the Wildlife Center, it was clearly understood that animal injuries from dogs always came from Cannon Beach. I witnessed this firsthand. The park ranger assigned to our area has told me his area is too large for him to manage day-to-day issues. He's not able to take statements from us to be able to ticket illegal acts. Working with an endangered species requires specific training to be able to work under the federal permit. For a plover family to survive in Cannon Beach would require a greater number of federally permitted volunteers to provide higher monitoring. I genuinely hope for the sake of survival of their family that no plovers opt to nest here. The Allen Report and the planning commission offer differing timelines of dune grading. The more appropriate timeline is listed in the Allen Report, which is in line with animal nesting seasons. Every small act of kindness toward nature that we perform isn't just helping the immediate environment, but also helping the environment of everyone around us and those who come after us."
Thank you. Steve Reinhardt?
My name is Steve Reinhardt, I live in Portland, Oregon, I own a condo at Breakers Point. I've been part of a family of five generations, probably close to six years spending time in Cannon Beach. It's been part of our family ethic, so to speak, to spend time here and invest in the community. We frequently access the beach in the north area and find it more and more difficult over time, especially for seniors and for young kids, the steepness of the dunes gets to be prohibited at times, and some people no longer wish to participate, and that's been frustrating. I think if the dunes, it appears to me the dunes, if left unmanaged, will become more and more difficult in that way, the transition of, as you have been shown, the transition of sand that seems to accumulate in the north beach area as well as Chapman Beach. European beech grass is a non-native plant and has altered the natural dune formation in the area, and is impacting the entire beach area, north and south. The dune needs to be managed to return to its natural existence. Effective management will allow them to return to that. Human impact is damaging the sand ecosystem. The state of Oregon has provided reports that believe to support that, and the northern dunes is really having a major impact in and out because of the man-made situations being created. The dunes management plan, I think, is an important feature in the future to be taken seriously to help restore the natural dune formation and the natural dune ecosystem. Generations in the future will come to appreciate that and can look back at this time of dealing with this problem beach-wide, not just in one focused area. Thank you.
Uh-oh, here we have a moment. For those of you who have not been here, this is my one little issue, is we got time yet. Yeah, so, it's getting here, hang on. The next speaker would be Jack Erickson?
Pass.
Pass. How about Stephen Thomas?
Pass.
Kathy Filgas? Hang on, Kathy, we're almost there.
Oh, excuse me.
It looks good.
It makes you feel better, doesn't it?
It makes a better bump. Okay, we're ready.
Good afternoon, my name is Kathy Filgas, my address is 655 Southwest 63rd in Portland. This issue has been so divisive in our community. It's a miserable situation for all of us. You all are probably dreading the thought, if you vote for dune removal, of meeting your neighbors down at the post office every day and having to deal with the consequence of your vote. In my case, I have friends on the Friends of the Dunes petition list, and many of them have come to my house, and ironically, had happy hour on our front porch enjoying the views. Diana actually planned Schwab in my wedding reception, for goodness sake. So this is not a good thing happening at Cannon Beach. My dad used to say, "There's always a win-win," and Schwab, my husband, always says, "When one party wins all and one party loses all, it never goes away." So how can we make this a win-win? Where is there a compromise? And the elephant in the room is actually two elephants. One is that many are still angry that the Breakers Point was ever built and feel that it is just deserts if the dunes ruin their view. The other is that the folks along Ocean Avenue are a block of rich and sensitive individuals and shouldn't be allowed willy-nilly to move dunes around. So the essence to the opposition to dune removal seems to be about them and us, and this is incredibly difficult to compromise on. We've already noted that the dunes aren't either native or natural with a non-native European beech grass, so the commitment to conserving them is questionable. Instead, why don't we allow dune removal if the dunes go above a set height and consider charging an appropriate fee for the permit for the privilege of removing them? Consider it a profit center for the city and earmark those funds for things Friends of the Dunes and Cannon Beach care about or really need. The Haystack Rock Awareness Program, the Food Bank, funding for more equipment for the fire department. Okay. So the essence to the opposition to dune removal seems to be about them and us, and this is incredibly difficult to compromise on. We've already noted that the dunes are neither native or natural with a non-native European beech grass, so the commitment to conserving them is questionable. Instead, why don't we allow dune removal if the dunes go above a set height and consider charging an appropriate fee for the permit for the privilege of removing them? Consider it a profit center for the city and earmark those funds for things Friends of the Dunes and Cannon Beach care about or really need. The Haystack Rock Awareness Program, the Food Bank, funding for more equipment for the fire department. Then everyone can win a little. The Friends of the Dunes and the city can plan on revenues to fund new or favorite programs. Locals and visitors who can't access the beach or just want to walk on the road instead of the sand can still enjoy our view promenade on Ocean Avenue. The folks at Breakers Point will finally go away. No offense, Bruce, but you are known for your persistence. And Ocean Avenue homeowners will continue to be good neighbors and will honor the regulations as set forth in a dune management plan. And both groups will support the city with additional revenues from the dune removal permits. I ask you to consider a compromise, either mine or another, to keep this community whole and known for its enlightened resolutions to difficult challenges. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Schwab, did you want to speak? Pass. John Thayer?
Okay. Good evening. My name is John Thayer, 132 South Laurel, Cannon Beach. I've owned a home in Cannon Beach for over 20 years. My two brothers, Tommy and Mike, and his wife, Kristy, own homes in Cannon Beach as well. The Thayer family has been vacationing in Cannon Beach since the early 1960s, long before there was any sand buildup along the presidential streets in Chapman Point. Speaking for the entire Thayer family, we've always taken immense pride in this unique place and know that striking a balance between the natural beauty of the area and the diverse needs of the community can be very delicate. Bob Kuzens, who's in the audience tonight, and myself led the effort to implement and adopt the current Cannon Beach Sand Management Plan over 15 years ago. We feel, as do many others, that this plan, very similar to the current plan under consideration, has proved to be very successful. The plan restored views and access to the beach, not only for the homeowners, but for the thousands of visitors that come here each year. It has saved the city thousands of dollars in maintenance costs each year by not having to regularly clean up the streets of drifting sand and having to carve out public access at the end of each of the presidential streets. The current plan recommended by the Planning Commission exceeds the minimum standards set forth by statewide goal, statewide planning goal 18, the four dune management plan adopted by the state in the early 1970s. As most of you know, the goal specifies detailed requirements for four dune grading and must be based on a specific dune system management plan that prescribes standards for maintaining flood protection, maintaining overall system sand supply, and post-grading sand stabilization. There are at least six dune grading plans currently in place in Oregon that meet these requirements. I think we all realize that this issue is one that can be, that can evoke deep-seated passions and convictions. We all have differing thoughts and perspectives about how we want our community to look and feel, differing ideas and values on how things should be. Having said that, I applaud the Planning Commission for their thoughtful research, discussion, and discourse in working through this process. They've listened to differing opinions, and the data, science, facts, and figures have been considered as well. At the end of the day, they found common ground and compromise to find solutions that benefit all of us. They've crafted a solution that meets the needs of the broad base of constituents that make up the Cannon Beach community. I endorse the work of the Planning Commission and would encourage the city council to adopt this plan.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Greg Swedenborg?
Good evening. Greg Swedenborg, 188 West Second Street, Cannon Beach. That's a timing device. You know, I want to thank the council for taking the time to put this string of five meetings together and all the work behind that. You know, it's obvious that this is a divisive issue, and you hear that tonight, you see it in people's opinions and letters to the editor and things like that. The one thing that I have noticed is anytime, and I think it was just said, anytime that there's not a compromise and you take something away, in this case, the ability to get a permit to grade for dunes, it's going to be, there's going to be a winner and a loser. And unfortunately, there's different reasons for grading for dunes that are not just for the views. So we hear and we hear talk about the Presidential Street and Breakers Point, but two years ago, when a huge part of the Breakers Point's dunes got moved over along from Spruce Street all the way up to basically where Schooner's Cove is, that is now in its second year of growing. When I was growing up here in the early 70s, that was never dune grass. So now, if it doesn't get taken out by the ocean, that whole strip of our downtown, including the second street stairs, will have, in 10 years, dunes that people will have to walk across. I have picture evidence, photo evidence of this happening and how it, when it happened and so forth. So I want to kind of bring up the point that if you were to make a decision that no dune grading for views, you know, and that's it, then 10 years from now, if there aren't changes within the title system taking this dune grass out, basically the entire downtown stretch of these beach will be less accessible. It will impact views for many of the hotels along that strip, there are five or six of them, including the conference center. And that will affect, you know, people coming to Cannon Beach in some cases and the lodging revenue that goes into the taxes for the town, but that's 10, 12 years away. But the decision you're making tonight or tomorrow will affect that. So I don't think that was part of your field trip today when you went to Breakers Point and the various places, but this is happening and it's been happening for two years in that stretch of the beach, and I'd just like your decision tonight, hopefully, would be something that when we have this discussion down the road, you know, it encompasses those needs as well, not just some of the Hatfield McCoy stuff that's been going on in this town since the mid 70s or longer. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Janet Patrick?
Good evening. Janet Patrick, 255 Northwest Torrey View Drive, Portland, Oregon. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you on the council for coming out today to walk around and see what our dunes are like. And I just can't tell you how much it meant to me that you made the effort to come and spend some time really looking over the situation. And I realize that this situation is for all of the beach area. We are not the only one that is facing the problems that you saw today. So today also, I went down to Whale Park and I looked out to the dunes at Breakers Point, and I noticed that the tail of the dune is slowly moving northward. And I know that Tom Hornig spoke with you up to the council about recognizing that it is creating somewhat of a funnel activity, and I'm very concerned that in a large storm, we are going to see it turn into more of a funnel to come up Ecola Creek or potentially into the city of Cannon Beach. And Dr. Allen, when he spoke to the Planning Commission, talked about spreading some of the sand from the dunes southward onto the beach area that abuts Ecola Creek. He felt that the additional sand would provide a run-up for very, for wave energy displacement. And I think that's kind of a positive attitude towards displacing it and yet moving it and yet helping to protect our city at the same time. Secondly, I would like to encourage you to retain the 35-foot sand distance from the buildings so that the people in lower areas or those with basements will still have light into their units or into homes that have a basement area. And it will also allow us to maintain or individuals to maintain their homes by people who service them for building envelope maintenance reasons. And lastly, it's my hope that each grading effort at Cannon Beach will begin the process of replacing a species of seagrass that is not native. And like the ivy at Tyrone Creek, it will take many years for this grass under control, to get it under control, but by grading and replanning with a non-invasive species, future generations of beachgoers will be able to enjoy the beach without having to scale a mountain of sand. The non-invasive grace, grass will bring with it a renewed habitat that will live amongst our dunes. Thank you again for all your time and effort.
Thanks, Chad. Robbie Dodd?
Robbie Dodd, PO Box 427, Cannon Beach. Thank you. I'll try not to be redundant, since you've heard from me before. Thank you for the plan, and I believe that it hits our objectives. I would like you to consider the following modification, if it's possible. The time period for the grading in the proposal is April through June, and if we can push that back a few months, I understand that that gives the grass a better opportunity to stabilize. It also pushes it out of tourist season, which I heard that that was also a consideration. I know it's tough because we're trying to time it with the winds and the currents, and so I know that's tricky. Second, as the last comment was, I believe that the current plan allows for grading away from the buildings when it encroaches to 35 feet, and the proposal is 20 feet. I just, it's just my opinion, but I feel like that's too close. I'd be more comfortable with 35 if that could be considered. The concurrent proposal has chemical fertilizer to be planted or to be, to be applied to the plants. It would be great to be able to stabilize and fertilize without chemicals. And after reading through many of the testimony, reading through the science, you know, I think it's smart. Both it follows Goal 18 and the science to include all of the beach at Chapman Point. It seems like it's hard to carve out one piece versus the other. To me, that kind of makes sense. And again, the goal is not to destroy the dunes, but to manage an engineered environment for the benefit of all and to conserve the natural diversity of coastal environments. I do see, I have a little time, I won't use it all up, but among other things, I'm a retired professional wedding and portrait photographer, and I've been up on top of the dunes, and they're beautiful, setting it up, and you have the dune grass in the foreground with haystack in the background, but I can do that whether it's 5 feet or 80 feet. And I also realize that standing up there, that it is a beautiful dune, and I think, as I've said before, it's engineered to be that way. And I know that that dune has been graded, at least at Breakers Point, six times or so over the last 20 years, so I recognize the following grading, and I've seen the pictures all over town, and I was, you know, I haven't witnessed that, but I could see why that could be terrifying, but I also see what it looks like now. And so, as some have said, I believe there is a compromise somewhere to be responsible in how we manage the environment. Thank you.
Thanks. Rex? Rex Amos? No? Okay. Diane?
I'm Cass.
Okay. Gary Giacomis?
I get it called all different, you know, Giacomo and Giacomis and everything else. Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Gary Giacomis, and my wife and I own a home at 698 Oak Street in Cannon Beach, and also we're part of the CPHOA. We have owned the home for almost two years and lived there about half the time throughout the entire year. Cannon Beach has been a vacation spot for us for almost 20 years, and we love the town, its beautiful beaches, and the friendly people in the town. First of all, I would like to recommend or commend and thank you for putting together a comprehensive program to review the four dunes management. This is a huge time commitment on your part. We found the city hall works, work session and the first public hearing very, very informative and very well done. We realized that after the sessions, of course, that hard, it's hard and a complicated decision you will have to make at the end in regards to four dunes management and dune grading. We also now understand the need and the importance of the dunes and seagrass are to the coastal beaches in the communities, but under certain set guidelines. The problem, as you know, is extreme sand inundation in the north beaches and sand erosion in the south beaches. The easiest decision to do is to do nothing at all and let the dunes manage themselves, which is not the right thing to do. You can, you can't make everyone happy, and there needs to be compromise on both sides of dune grading. We all need to put personal prejudice aside and come together to make the right decision. The quote at the public hearing by one of the out-of-town presenters that the beachfront homeowners are only 5% of the total Cannon Beach homeowners was upsetting and a very divisive comment. The enhanced view is important to us, but not, that's not the only reason for dune grading. Sand inundation, beach accessibility, there are other reasons. The science community does not seem to have a problem with four dunes grading, and there are benefits derived from grading the dunes. We would like to recommend the following. Allow four dunes grading for view enhancement under statewide planning goal 18 with a multi-year plan. If you decide to grade the dunes into the beach, this will allow the homeowners to plan the maintenance costs. We would also think the beachfront homeowners would be willing to pay the cost for dune grading to enhance views. That way, the other homeowners will not have to come up with that expense. Follow Dr. Hacker's suggestions that American beech grass should be the long-term choice to replant the graded dunes. Lastly, and probably most important, we are concerned that the draft four dunes management plan did not specifically address the dunes north of Breakers Point and the management, sand management area. That dune is in front of our members' homes, so perhaps the highest in the littoral area. They must be specifically included in the sand management area of the plan. State law Goal 18 requires that the city apply the four dunes grading rule to areas with sand buildup up along the whole beach within the city. We again want to thank you for your time and energy, and we also appreciate the professional approach you have taken to resolve the four dunes issue, and we know you'll do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, you guys are being amazingly on time. Great. David Snodgrass?
Hello. My name is David Snodgrass. I live at 716 Oak in Chapman Point Homeowners Association, and that is an association that is right along the northern Chapman Beach. I built my beach home in 2005, about 19 years ago. So first, I'd like to thank all of the efforts of the city to really do a comprehensive study on this whole issue. It's not easy. It's very complicated, and hats off to you for taking it on and trying to get it right. The Cannon Beach Littoral Cell, it goes from Falcon Cove to Chapman Point, as per the Oregon Department of Geology. It is all one beach system, and that is supported and all agree, the Rosenfeld, Crest Report, the Allen Report, as well as the state guideline 18. Each beach segment impacts the others, and all of the sand in the dune belongs to the beach system. If a beach segment were to be left out of the management plan, it would be the recipient of managed sand pushed out by others. This would cause a natural and accelerated buildup of dune height. It would cause unreasonable harm and hardship. 79% of the sand migrates north, and that's per the Allen Report. Chapman Beach is the most northerly segment, so all of this sand moves and ends up in one place, and that's what we're seeing happening. The sand buildup over the past 20 years, based on the Oregon Department of sand management area. That dune is in front of our members' homes, so perhaps the highest in the littoral area. They must be specifically included in the sand management area of the plan. State law Goal 18 requires that the city apply the four dunes grading rule to areas with sand buildup up along the whole beach within the city. We again want to thank you for your time and energy, and we also appreciate the professional approach you have taken to resolve the four dunes issue, and we know you'll do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, you guys are being amazingly on time. Great.
Hello. My name is David Snodgrass. I live at 716 Oak in Chapman Point Homeowners Association. And that is an association that is right along the northern Chapman Beach. I built my beach home in 2005, about 19 years ago. So first, I'd like to thank all of the efforts of the city to really do a comprehensive study on this whole issue. It's not easy, it's very complicated, and hats off to you for taking it on and trying to get it right. The Cannon Beach littoral cell, it goes from Falcon Cove to Chapman Point, as per the Oregon Department of Geology. It is all one beach system, and that is supported and all agree, the Rosenfeld, Crest Report, the Allen Report, as well as the state guideline 18. Each beach segment impacts the others, and all of the sand in the dune belongs to the beach system. If a beach segment were to be left out of the management plan, it would be the recipient of managed sand pushed out by others. This would cause a natural and accelerated buildup of dune height, it would cause unreasonable harm and hardship. 79% of the sand migrates north, and that's per the Allen Report. Chapman Beach is the most northerly segment, so all of this sand moves and ends up in one place. And that's what we're seeing happening. The sand buildup over the past 20 years, based on the Oregon Department of Geology, from Falcon Cove to Haystack Rock, they've actually eroded 64,000 yards of sand. They're losing their beach, they've lost their beach. The Presidential Streets to Akola Creek has gained 29,000 yards of accretion, three to six foot in height. Chapman Beach has gained 288,000 yards and a height increase of nine to 16 feet. So you see where it's all going, it's all supported. If Chapman Beach were not allowed to manage, the same as others, then it would permanently remove sand from the beach system, because it's going to lock it in. We've got the European beach grass, and that dune just gets pushed farther back. That sand's not going to be available to the rest of the system. Chapman Beach is clearly included in the city limits map. It is clearly not included in the four dune management plan. The preface in the plan states, together, these materials constituted overall plan for management of the four dune-
Thank you, David. Time's up.
Oh, jeez. I'm the first.
Uh-oh.
All right.
Thank you. Tim Ramsey.
I think that was Tim Ramey, right?
Yes, sorry. Looks like an S.
Good evening, I'm Tim Ramey. I live at 628 Oak Street. We're full-time residents of Cannon Beach. So I think this has been a great session, a lot of engagement by the community, we've learned a lot. Here are some of the things that I think I've learned in the process. The dune system that we have now is not a natural system, it's a man-made system. It came about because of the introduction of European beach grass, and that has created man-made problems. Man-made problems have man-made solutions. We learned from Tom Hornig that the massive dunes are sequestering sand permanently in the beach. The beach is eroding, and the dunes are accreting. And that's a bad thing for everybody, I think. It's not, it's not good for any group that I can think of. And so I think that has good science, that grading has a benefit for all. Dr. Hacker's testimony and the subsequent letter that she sent in, you know, really showed that it's likely that American beach grass is the dominant species 20 years from now. I had a conversation with her after the presentation she made, and she reiterated that in her subsequent testimony to you. So I think that should inform our decision on what to replant if we move ahead with a four dune management plan. I think that Tom Hornig's testimony on September 12th was very strong. Talked about, you know, the potential impacts to the clam population being negligible or none, that the sand would wash away in a matter of a couple of tide cycles. So I think we've learned a lot. The thing we haven't really learned is any good science-based reason not to manage this problem. And it's a problem, it's a big divisive problem. I think it's very clear to me that you have a hard decision ahead of you. But the four dune management plan is a great document, it's not perfect, we do need to include the Chapman Point beach. Obviously, the four dune management plan would be defective in the eyes of the state if it didn't include all of the beaches in the littoral cell, and it doesn't currently now. The recommendation for allowing 35 feet for remedial grading, I think is a logical one, a good one. If you own a structure, you'd like to be able to manage inundation of sand within 35 feet as well as 20 feet. And that makes a lot of sense to me. So I thank you for your process, thank you for your time, and I look forward to the result.
Thanks, Tim. Standish McLeary.
Good evening. I have a home at 690 Oak Street, and I'm a retired environmental attorney. Though for the last 30 years, I've been a practicing clinical psychologist. And from both fronts, you have my complete sympathy. Roughly 70% of any sand that gets put back in the system is going to go north. So from the point of view of the Chapman Beach homeowners, is that if everyone else grades, it all goes north to us, which is not a very good outcome if we can't do anything about it. I had a conversation with Mark Barnes in April of 2018, saying it's less than entirely clear whether Chapman Point is included in the plan. And he said, "Well, that's because to get included in the plan, they have to apply for a permit. Then they get included in the comprehensive plan, then they're included in the plan." I said, "Well, it's less than entirely clear they're included in the sand management plan, just to begin with." And he said, "Well, I guess we could make that clearer." So he proposed a language in April of 2018 that made it clear that the entirety of Chapman, of Cannon Beach was covered, which was in the Doug Amey report and Dr. Allen report also. And he made it clear that with an amendment to the comprehensive plan, anyone not previously in the comprehensive plan, like Breakers and Presidential Streets, could be. In October of 2018, Commissioner Kerr didn't like that language and asked him to take it out. She thought it opened the door to Chapman Point. And, because she had been approached by what she called an outside group, expressing concern that Chapman Point was included. This is the same Chapman Point that has most of the sand at Chapman Beach. More than, you know, more of the 300,000 cubic yards than Breakers does. Now, I've since come to understand that in December of 2018, he put most of that language back in, and it is a proposal before you that does clarify that Chapman Beach is included. The problem, I think, arose from the fact that the Crest Report explicitly said that they went from 1997 nomenclature, the Rosenfeld Report, because the sand management areas in 1997, since nothing existed in Chapman Point, maybe two homes, weren't particularly relevant. Of course, they're relevant under Goal 18, because you have to plan for the entire beach and adjacent beaches. So, it was called in the January 2018 proposal of Crest, Chapman Beach parentheses Breakers Point. And we wrote in and said, "Well, wait a minute, that's less than entirely clear that, you know, that it's not just Breakers Point." And in the May 2018-
Thank you, Standish.
She took out the other reference. So that's the part that needs clarifying. Just make real sure we're in there.
Cameron LaFolia?
Pass for now.
Pass for now.
That's close.
Okay. Dave Sund?
Pass.
Pass. Bob Cousens?
My name is Bob Cousens, and I live at 3850 Northeast Jackson School Road in Hillsborough, and my residence here is at 463 Ocean Avenue. My name is Bob Cousens, I'm representing the Ocean and Laurel Homeowners Association. Our association includes homeowners from Washington to Jefferson along Ocean Avenue. The sand management plan that we implemented with the help and partnership from the city along Ocean Avenue 18 years ago is working, and it's working really well. We have greatly reduced sand inundation, flooding, and have eliminated most of the sand removal costs for the city along Ocean Avenue. We have removed a significant amount of blackberry plants, which you'll see in a minute, and also a large area that was infested with Japanese knotweed, a very invasive plant. We isolated this invasive species and hauled the sand and roots to a disposal site. Ocean Avenue was not pedestrian-friendly at times, especially after storms where flooding and blowing sand occurred, causing difficulty walking along Ocean Avenue. However, as the saying goes, a picture is worth a thousand words. I have three pictures that show Jefferson and Ocean Avenue in 1999, which you have in front of you, prior to the grading in 2001 and 2002. And one taken in September of this year, almost 20 years later. If you turn to the first picture, this is a picture of West Jefferson Avenue, and it's about 100 feet east of Ocean Avenue. And you can see the amount of sand inundation that we had after a storm. I've never seen a picture like this again after we've completed the grading. If you go to picture number two, this is our resident, and once again, more sand inundation after a major storm. Picture number three, this shows the sand that was in front of our house, and it actually, the dark green, or the blackberry plants that were invasive on the sand, and also the height was 10 to 12 feet. And the last picture is my favorite. It was taken three weeks ago, and this is what the area looks like 20 years later. The homeowners between Adams and Jefferson maintain this area, and three weeks ago, we saw a herd of 17 elk in front of our places. In closing, the planning commission did a good job with the new proposed ordinance and management plan. I would encourage you to adopt the management plan that was prepared by the planning commission. I would also encourage you to consider the few tweaks that Mike Morgan emailed to the city on October 1st. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob. And Tillyard?
Pass.
Pass. Jerry, or Terry?
Pass.
Terry.
Hello. My name is Allison Reynolds, I'm with Stoll Reeves, and my address is 760 Southwest 9th Avenue in Portland, Oregon. And I am here on behalf of 564 Oak Street 2 LLC and Cannon Beach LLC, and they own properties located at 564 Oak Street and 2, or 528 Ash Street. So I'm here to talk about these properties specifically, and the larger northern Chapman Point area, which are currently excluded from the four dune management plan, as you guys have heard, despite having the most serious levels of sand accretion in the area. And so, we support the city's efforts to update the four dune management program based on the current data and science, and to allow for thoughtful four dune grading and management. However, the proposed four dune management plan must be amended so that it includes the entire area of impacted beach as required by state law. Statewide planning Goal 18 allows, but does not require, the city to adopt a plan to manage sand accumulation in the four down area. However, if the city does choose to adopt a plan for dune management, that plan must include the entire beach and four dune area subject to sand accretion. As explained in the Allen Report, which studied the beach, Cannon Beach is a single littoral cell, and the northern areas include Chapman Point and experience heavy sand accretion. The city has not explained why the Chapman Point subdivision and surrounding areas are excluded from the four dune management plan. It may have been merely an oversight in the draft preparation, but we suspect this may be either a historical artifact of the areas that have previously been graded, or reliance upon prior conditions of approval imposed when Chapman Point subdivision was created. Indeed, these conditions restrict certain dune grading on these private properties, and approvals would be needed for such grading within the subdivision. However, these prior conditions do not override the requirements of Goal 18 that mandate inclusion of the full beach in the four dune management plan. Furthermore, properties outside of the Chapman Point subdivision, including 528 Ash Street, are not part of the subdivision and its prior conditions, but are still excluded from the four dune management plan. To address this problem and ensure the four dune management plan is valid, we urge the city to include the northern Chapman Point areas. These areas were studied in the Allen Report, and the report contains a factual basis for including them in the plan. This correction can be made, we believe, by amending Figure 3 of the plan to include this area within the Breakers Point sand management area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up will be Jim Ramsey. No Jim Ramsey? Pass, I'm sorry, thank you. Paula Ramsey. There we go.
Hi, my name is Paula Ramsey. I'm from 453 Breakers Point Drive, I live with Jim Ramsey. We have, we have a few things that we would like to have read into the record. We want responsible, sensible dune management that supports the common good. That means favorable, natural dune heights that afford native plants, animals, and human access to coexist, so that all can live with this natural area. And that means we need to restore what was natural and work to maintain it going forward. My husband and I attended Dr. Allen's presentation on dune management and the ecology of the area, and it was so interesting to learn about what drove part of this problem, and it really is the non-native European dune grass that contributed to the building of the dunes at the north end of Cannon Beach. The European dune grass, and we've lived there over 20 years now, and the dune grass that grows straight up, it's a little bit sticky, it captures the sand, and then it does it all over again, inches and inches and inches every storm. And it prevents the normal ebb and flow of the sand that should be going north and south with prevailing winds and tides. Obviously, we've all talked about, the report is showing Tolavana, Arcadia Beach, and Hug Point have all suffered large-scale sand erosion because of this non-native species, partly because of this species that was introduced. We ask that native grasses need to be allowed in the new management plan, and the use of non-native grasses should be highly limited and ideally phased out entirely. We would recommend grading should not happen during peak late spring and summer months, but rather earlier in the year, mindful and mindful of other ecological impacts. The current plan, reasonable setbacks from buildings for remedial sand removal at 35 feet is what we would favor. 10 to 20 feet is well onto private property for some people, and we could prevent a lot of expense if we were dealing with it earlier, as it's advancing toward buildings. We would ask that trimming of dune grass be permitted. We would also ask that all of Cannon Beach, including Chapman Point and the dunes there, to be included in the plan. We all paid collectively as a community a lot of money for experts to study this, so that we could take some of the emotion out of it and use our brains. And the science and the recommendations of hired experts should be the driving point in making this important decision for our community.
Thank you, Paula.
Thanks for letting me speak.
Hi, I'm Bill Dugovich. My home address, or one of my homes' addresses, is 11810 Southeast 200th Street, Kent, Washington. And when I say that, it seems like there is a hesitation in the room. And that has always struck me as interesting. Where people live, I think, is interesting, where they choose to live. Jobs and family are the deciding factor for most of us. You know, we get a new job, we move to a new city, parents get ill, kids move away, we like to be near them. Establishing a second home is different. Establishing a second home is different. The location of a second home, people make by choice. My wife and I chose Cannon Beach. We chose Cannon Beach because we like walking along the beach. There's no Walmart, there's no Starbucks. The city is full of local businesses that we enjoy patronizing because we can support the local economy here in Cannon Beach. But a funny thing happened after we bought our condominium and started telling people around town that we live at Breakers Point. Too often, there's a hesitation there, too. And a comment, something like, "So, you're not local." Yes, our condominium is our second home, but make no mistake, it is our home, our local home in Cannon Beach. We may only live here part-time, but we are full-time homeowners. We are full-time taxpayers. We are full-time and very strong advocates for our adopted city of Cannon Beach. As a Cannon Beach homeowner, I'm here to ask for your help. Help by approving a four dune management plan that stops the unnatural growth of our sand dunes. Adopt a plan that takes into account the dunes were largely created, if not wholly created, by the planting of invasive European beach grass. There are alternatives. Up and down the coast, they've realized what a mistake that has been. It did stabilize the dunes. It stabilized them too much, and now we have 290,000 cubic yards of sand north of Ecola Creek, and more in front of Chapman Beach. I'm not advocating for complete removal of the dunes. Keep enough for the protection of the city, of Breakers Point and Chapman's Point, but let's stop the unwarranted growth of them. I do believe what's before the City Council is an opportunity.
Thanks, Bill.
An opportunity to do the right thing for our city. Thank you.
Okay. Wait a minute, too many papers here.
I'm Wes Warman, P.O. Box 778, Cannon Beach. And I'm always trying to see the big picture, and that means, in our era, climate crisis that the world is in right now. And I think love of nature is something we all share, and I believe that nature can heal the world, but only if we get out of its way and do, let nature do its thing to heal the world. So, in our little part of the world, my opinion is, I'm against dune grading. It just feels to me like it's right to just let it be. Thank you.
Zinda Hens?
Yes.
Pass. Dak Hens? Carol Bennett?
She's gone.
She just left.
Just left?
Mayor, I'm here for the LCD. If you have any questions, I mean, I'll do that first.
Okay, thank you for being here. Lisa Kerr?
I'm going to pass, will you?
I know this says no, but Richard Bartholat?
Bartholat.
Bartholat, you're passing?
Good evening, Jeff Harrison, P.O. Box 742, Cannon Beach. Tonight, I'm representing myself and my wife, Jennifer Harrison. Mr. Mayor, with respect for your request regarding speaking tonight, I had planned not to do so, but there is new and relevant and important information that we think everyone should hear. First, a little history. In the 20-year lifespan of the Rosenfeld Plan, Breakers Point failed spectacularly to follow the rules regarding monitoring. 91% of the required monitoring reports to the city were simply not done. The absence of monitoring reports has been a huge sticking point and is an obvious disregard of the rules. This severely undermines their claims of environmental stewardship and responsible grading. Which brings us to now. Last week, we confirmed with Mr. Sennowald, with OPRD, that even today, as BP asks you to continue allowing grading for views with even more volume, more latitude, increased frequency, and less oversight, Breakers Point is currently in violation of their current OPRD permit. Permit number 2868-16 was issued November 2016, and grading occurred February 2017. Approval condition number four reads, "Monitoring report shall be submitted to OPRD one year after planting beach grass to ensure adequate revegetation and stabilization of the disturbed area has been accomplished. If necessary, the plantings shall be supplemented by thinning nearby stock of dense European beach grass." This report was required to have been filed February 2018, but once again, it was simply not done. As we have said, this is a chronic and systemic example of Breakers Point failure to follow the required rules, and yet, during this contentious time, when all eyes are upon them, Breakers Point simply can't or won't follow the rules. This will never end unless you end it. Please stop the practice of grading for view. I also want to comment briefly on a couple of things I've heard tonight. I personally reject both of Ms. Philgass's postulations on what this is about. I believe most, if not all, members of Friends of the Dunes feel the same way. Neither jealousy nor ill will have a place in this issue. I'd also like to respond to what Mr. Swedenberg said. The area he referenced currently has no natural protection as prescribed by the Living Shores Act. It has armored, hard-armored seawalls. I would think they would welcome some natural protection that would be growing, and I don't see a time when you would ever disallow remedial grading for those who needed it. And lastly, one of the speakers mentioned that Dr. Hacker said that American beach grass may become dominant in this area, and that could be true, but she never said that was a good thing. There are actually scientific studies that she published and were provided to you by her and Mr. Seebloom that said that was not a good thing, and that areas where ABG did become dominant would be more suspect and liable to have inundation over topic.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a solution for your problem.
Okay.
Get two of those things.
We thought of that.
Yeah.
Depends on order.
When you're done with the one, set it aside and start over.
Yep.
That's my contribution for you today.
Next time we do five hearings in a row, I will definitely have two of these.
Okay, very good, very good. My name is Ed Stone. I own a home in Portland, 4540 Northwest Malheur Avenue. I don't have any written comments here because I wasn't planning to come. I've been to two of the meetings so far, but I was pondering over the issues, and I just felt like I needed to come down and make one final point. First of all, I'd like to say, I'm sorry for the horse, I flew a little horse today. I'd like to say amen to all of those who have spoken in support of the city of Cannon Beach having a fair and appropriate and qualifying four dune management plan. I don't think there's anybody at Breakers Point or Chapman Point that don't want the city of Cannon Beach to have a fair and reasonable and scientific and approved sand management plan. So I'm amen to all those who have supported that. Those who opposed four dune grading for view purposes simply do not want grading at all. And if the City Council approves a four dune grading plan that prohibits grading of the dunes for view purposes, the city will be effectively giving up their right and responsibility to manage the four dunes along the coastal line in Cannon Beach. Because those who oppose and who have won the argument for no grading for view purposes will control every application for a permit to do any grading, excuse me, in the city of Cannon Beach. They will do whatever they can do to obstruct and to stop any kind of grading, and they will use, if they win, and this should not be a win-lose situation, but if they win, they're going to own four dune grading in Cannon Beach, because they'll use every opportunity to use the view as an excuse or a reason for not allowing the grading of the dunes for the benefit of everybody who lives here and visits Cannon Beach. So it is my sincere hope that you, five members of the City Council, will recognize that a vote for not allowing grading for view purposes is abdication of your right and responsibility to control the dunes in Cannon Beach. Thank you.
Good evening. I wasn't planning on being here tonight either, but I thought I'd come down. I guess, I don't have any notes, and mine's more of a historical.
Jim, I need your name and address for the record.
Jim Sap, 232 Laurel. And then also, let us go. I'm going to kind of talk a little bit about history. I've had this house for over 30 years, and it started out where we used to be able to remove sand. We have no beach grass in front of our house. From where we're at to the other nine houses north of us, there is no beach grass, it's just sand. And so, the sand would pile up, and we've had times where I have a deck out right by the beach and with benches, and it would completely fill the deck, cover the benches, destroyed 50% of my yard, killed all the plants. My next-door neighbor, Tom Williamson, he has a four-and-a-foot fence, the sand was up over the top of his fence, they were taking bobcats in over the top to get the sand out of his yard. And so, we pay every year to have McEwen Construction come in and move the sand. Originally, we were able to use a cap to just push it from where it is next to our property, just level it back out, and we're clear up on the top of the beach there, so we're not even close to where the water is, and they just level it out and kind of push it back over the edge. Raymar came in and decided that he wanted to have us do backhoes instead, and so we had to dig only 12 feet out from our property line and remove with a backhoe, and that caused this huge four-foot ditch that people almost died falling into. So the next year, he said, "Well, we can't do that, you can go ahead and feather it out." Well, we'd have to pick the sand, move it out, then they'd move that, take that sand and put it over the edge. Basically, we're accomplishing the same thing, but it costs us twice as much money. So for us, there is no beach grass, and you can't paint everybody with a single brush. All we're trying to do is keep the sand out of our property, you know, like we've been doing for 30 years, and just move it away from our property. And I think that any kind of, I sympathize with the people that are at Breakers Points and Chapman, but a lot of the sand that's coming from south of us is going right into ours, and from us going on to Breakers Point and Chapman. And all we're asking for is to let us do what we've been doing for 30 years to protect our property, and not have the expense in having to replace our yards and all our plants every couple of years because of the sand inundation. Thank you.
Mike Manzulli, did you want to talk?
Sure, I wasn't going to. Mike Manzulli?
Hang on a second, Mike.
Sure. I'll be way under three minutes, so.
Well, okay, if you're going to be.
Mike Manzulli, P.O. Box 650, Tolavana Park. I wasn't speaking tonight, but I'd like to respond to Mr. Stone's testimony. I strongly oppose dune grading for views. I do not oppose dune grading for inundation and true safety concerns. I think that was, you know, just unfair of him to speak for us, and that's not where I stand. Thank you.
20 seconds, almost a record.
Hello, all. I'm Sharon Amber. I live at 2431 South Hemlock. I've been here for over 30 years, over 35 years, actually, and I've been coming here since 1963 because of relatives living in the area. The dunes are a magical, beautiful place. I have a 23-year-old son, I've been having birthday parties for him in the dunes for over 20 years. From the time he was six years old till he was about 11, he was going to be an entomologist, studyer of insects. This is the only place in the world I have seen nine-lined dune beetles. They're about this big, they're beautiful. There are a lot of native succulents in these dunes that house insects. They're the houses, they're the habitat for these insects. The world has lost 75% of its insects in the last 30 years. Now, I know people, a lot of people don't care about insects, but about 15 years ago, I saw snowy plover nesting there. This, we're talking about killing creatures' houses by this dune grading, and also destroying something that's beautiful. Now, the beach changes every day, the beach changes radically. I've seen amazing changes in the 35 years I've been here. The people who come to live here are the interlopers. If they want to live here, they kind of have to accept that it changes all the time, and if you just keep trying to, I think it's time to end just ripping up stuff for the benefit of our view. You know, take your feet down to the beach and look at the view, it's there. So, thank you very much.
Okay, we're almost to the end, and I will eventually start going back through the list, but our last one is Jan Seibert-Warman. And you'll have to wait just a second, Jan, for me to catch up.
It's going to be short.
It's going to be short?
I don't know how short. I think it's going to be pretty short.
You surprised me with that. I'll wait.
Okay.
Okay, give me your address.
Jan Seibert-Warman, P.O. Box 778, Cannon Beach. Dear Mayor and City Councilors, just a friendly reminder, the only reason Chapman Point homes were allowed to be built was that property owners there had to first sign deeds with restrictions that no dune grading for views would be allowed. Let's keep it simple and fair. No dune grading for views in Cannon Beach for anyone. Thank you very much.
Well, that was short, Jan. That was like 39 seconds. Okay, so I'm going to go back through the list. For those folks who pass. Okay, so I'm going to go back through the list for those folks who passed or might try again. Again, if you don't want to, that's fine. So Frank Patrick. Frank's coming up.
My name is Frank Patrick. I live at 255 Northwest Torrevue, and I own a condo with my wife at 654 Breakers Point. How appropriate that I come right up behind Jan. I don't know where she's getting her deeds. There are no digging restrictions having to do with Cannon Beach at Breakers Point at all. I've heard about some having to do with some others, but not with Breakers Point, and I've reviewed those deeds. So I'll just say that that's a standing point. With respect to what this is really all about, is it a good question? Because we all stay away from the really ugly questions. What's that person's motive? What's that person's agenda? And really, what it comes down to, as a city council, you have to say, it doesn't matter what those agendas are. It doesn't matter what that person is, what they want, okay? Is it consistent with Goal 18? Is it consistent with the plan that has been proposed? Is it consistent with logic and the science that has been set forth? I think the opening statement by the city's staff makes it real clear. There's a ton of sand, in fact, not a ton of sand, but many tons of sand. Hundreds of cubic yards of sand have accumulated. And I asked in one hearing before, how much sand is enough? We already know that we far exceed any of the FEMA standards, all of the flood standards, before I knew that. In fact, Dr. Allen says, we've got so much sand up on the beach that it's going to be a funnel effect to go right up Ecola Creek. That should be a concern of Cameron LaFollette, who's a part of Orca, and they're really talking big about the Ecola Creek area, and Mike Manzouli. But nobody seems to want to talk about that, because that's not a convenient fact. But the fact is, what we've got right now is a disaster waiting to happen if we should really have a huge storm that would come in. Part of that storm disaster is the loss of the Larch Creek Bridge, Larch Avenue Bridge. Now we've got an erosion problem there that the city hasn't been even thinking about, okay? It's eating in, and it's eating in, too, quite candidly, that whole shoreline on the north side of Ecola Creek. That's why there's a concern about the thirty-five feet. That's why there's so concern. Why are we changing that from twenty, thirty-five to twenty? That's what it's been for many years. The sand has been adequately and well managed for the last fifteen years. The point is, why are we taking it away? I have absolutely no idea. If I could understand what the political goal is, I would understand it. But this I know. We've got a situation where it has now come to historic problems. If you want to see what sand management's, no sand management's going to be, go north to Chapman Point, because they've got it. If you want to see what it's inhibiting and causing, go south and you'll see that all the sand is gone. Dr. Allen says you've got to keep the sand in the littoral cell so it cycles back around. If it's on the beach, it doesn't do you any good. It does you harm. He says you've got to have sand for run-up of the waves. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Colleen Toomey? She's gone. Okay. Iris Dennett?
She's gone.
Kathy Steinman?
Yes.
Jack Erickson? She's gone. Stephen Thomas? Shoeb? Yes. Rex Amos?
Oh, God, if you don't know what things are now, I couldn't help you.
Darn, I thought you had the answer for me, Rex. Diane?
I'm here.
Thank you. Cameron?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Cameron LaFollette. I'm the executive director of Oregon Coastal Alliance, P.O. Box 857, Astoria, 97103. I want to make a step back a little bit from the immediate fight here and make a general point, which is, humans are going to have to start living with nature as opposed to taking whatever they want from it, which has been our M.O. worldwide for a very long time. It doesn't take ten minutes in front of the television to see that ecosystem integrity is disintegrating worldwide, not to mention climate change is the most sort of obvious, terrible looming cloud. And it's, we're going to have to start changing how we approach living in the natural world, which we all have to live in, of course. Cannon Beach is therefore positioned in a situation to be able to protect the dunes integrity so that natural processes can continue unmolested, and the dunes therefore protect the city from wave overtopping during storms and king tides. We need to also remember that under Goal 18, no one has the right to a view. If a city wishes, or a local government unit wishes, to provide an opportunity for dune grading for views, they may, but they don't must, to be not quite grammatical. They, it's, we tend to forget that what we have is not necessarily what we have to have. It's not a right. If I buy a condo at Breakers Point or any other place, I don't have a right to the view. I might have a view when I buy the place, but maybe not later on, depending on what happens. Now, it is, of course, true that the dunes in front of Cannon Beach are quote-unquote unnatural because of European beach grass. But let's remember why European beach grass was planted. It wasn't planted because it's beautiful. It wasn't planted just because people didn't have anything else to do. It was planted because people wanted to build a town behind the dunes. And naturally speaking in Oregon, the dunes, the native grasses and plants on our dunes, along the whole coast, pretty much, the dunes would move. We don't have a native grass that is going to stabilize dunes the way European beach grass does. We can remove the European beach grass from the dunes in front of Cannon Beach, and Cannon Beach will have to migrate into the hills, because the dunes will start to move. They will inundate the areas as they used to do. Oregon Coastal Alliance is not in favor of European beach grass in the unbuilt-up areas of the coast. We would like to see it removed. But in front of the built-up areas, it's a necessary compromise. Cannon Beach is already a leader. You were designated Oregon's first tsunami-ready community by the National Weather Service in 2002. You were the fifth one in the nation. Ending view grading for views continues the city's leadership in preparedness.
Thank you, Cameron. Let's see, Dave Sandler already left. Ann Tillyard? Yes. Terry?
Yes.
Catherine? Rimmel? Jim Ramsey?
Yes.
Zinda Hints?
Yes.
Dak Hints?
Yes.
Lisa Phipps?
Unless you have a question.
Thank you, Lisa. Lisa Kerr?
I want to make it clear that my testimony today is my capacity as a private citizen of Cannon Beach, not as a planning commissioner, and does not reflect any opinions of the planning commission. My name is Lisa Kerr. I live at post office box 94, Cannon Beach, Oregon. Less than five percent of those who live in Cannon Beach live on beachfront property. Even less live at Breakers Point, yet this small percentage thinks they should have the right to alter our beautiful coastal landscape for their own advantage. I'm not talking about remedial grading for safety concerns. I'm talking about view grading. Everyone who testified in favor of cutting back the dunes, everyone who wants this, has a pecuniary interest in seeing the dunes lessened. Some have tried to rationalize their agenda with science, but that is disingenuous. It's about views and value of views. Yes, as Mr. Patrick said, there is a lot of sand at the north end. Sand dunes tend to be sandy. None of the folks who spoke in favor of keeping the dunes as they are has a financial interest involved. Instead, they spoke from their hearts. They live here. It is their community. They spoke because they love the dunes, and they love their beauty, and they don't want to live in an environment without them. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, there we go again. Richard, did you want to try? Passes. Bruce, you want to speak?
Yeah, I guess it's now or never.
Yep.
Bruce Francis, P.O. Box 246, Cannon Beach.
Okay, anyway. Normally, we have a commercial with nice music at this point, but.
Are we doing a tour tonight?
We're not doing a tour tonight, are you? No, I didn't. Some of you might not have known that we did some tours of the building to example the damage it's in for a committee that we're working with to help us decide on the city hall project, which is another big thing coming up. Okay, Bruce, go for it.
Thank you. This evening is the fifth and final testimonial session. You've received testimony from proponents for and advocates against grading for views. You have sponsored an evening of testimony from experts contracted by the city to provide the facts and science to enable the council to make a decision based on facts. I believe that enough evidence has been presented to allow you to come to the conclusion that two of the five littoral cells are experiencing accretion at a rate that it is impacting residents sufficiently to require a procedure to address it. If you've come to the same conclusion, I would like to request consideration of certain tweaks to the proposed language in the sand management plan and ordinance. The period to grade and replant should be November through March rather than April to June. You don't need any irrigation or fertilizer at this time to achieve ninety-eight percent propagation, which is one of the requests that are wanted. DLCD guidelines and Dr. Hacker confirm this. Sand should be kept away from the buildings a distance of thirty-five feet, our current code, not the proposed twenty feet. Sand should be placed down to six feet NGVD as recommended by ODFW rather than nine feet. This is the height given to us by Matt Hunter, ODFW clam biologist. No razor clams live above six feet NGVD. Sand deposited on the beach should be up to eighteen inches rather than four inches. This depth is ratified by Matt Hunter, the ODFW clam biologist. It's been done in the past and has not been detrimental to the clams. Chemical fertilizers should not be used because of harm to Ecola Creek and the wildlife. And mowing of beach grass should continue to be allowed. Mowing is currently in the code and has not caused any problems over the last twenty years. Thank you for your consideration of these suggestions. Now, I've been here forty-one years, and I'm still not regarded as a local. I'm a Johnny Come lately. So I know my accent throws a bit of a dispersion upon everything here. Nobody seems to take me seriously as I'm a Johnny Come lately. But I think one of the observations that I'm seeing is that we're being asked to live with nature. Now, I live with nature all the time, but as an incorporated area, you have to make concessions for the people who live in that incorporated area. If a tree falls across the road, you clear it. The infrastructure is for the benefit of the citizens. Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce. Okay. That actually concludes our list of names. I don't think anybody else new came in and signed another one after Jan. Colleen will check for me. Nope, okay. At that point, I will close the public hearing and open the discussion for deliberation. Does staff have anything they want to comment on before we get going?
Yes, I would like to point out that Attachment A5 in the, your documents, is a redrafted zoning ordinance of the changes to clarify some of the points that I think should have been there in written form with the original packet. So I just want to point that out, that that's contained within there. And then I think that Bill would like to at least say something about the comprehensive plan and littoral, including Chapman Point within the littoral, as was brought up by some of the.
That's really great, because I have a question here about that thing, and I put Bill's name beside it, so.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and Councilors. This did come up rather late in the process, and you heard some testimony tonight about how Chapman was originally included and not then not included as part of the four dune management plan. And I want to read you a little bit about Goal Eight, something from Goal 18, and it's echoed in the city's comprehensive plan as well, that says, if you're going to allow dune grading, you've got to do it pursuant to a plan, and the plan shall, a, cover an entire beach and four dune area subject to an accretion problem, including adjacent areas potentially affected by changes in flooding, erosion, or accretion. And I think some of that discussion, and also some of the city's history about this is where dune grading has been allowed in the past, is presidential and Breakers Point, and the four dune management plan through its various iterations kind of lost that discussion of Chapman. And so there should be some further discussion of Chapman in there. It does not mean that you have to allow grading in Chapman Point. You can allow it pursuant to the plan. There are a number of steps that would then have to follow before it ever be allowed. But it could be as simple as a sentence of saying that, you know, Chapman Point is subject to accretion, it's covered by the plan, but no grading will be allowed in front of it because of, you know, the plat note and historical and that it, you know, it is inappropriate according to the city. Or it could be more extensive. It's really up to you. But the four dune management plan really should address Chapman at some point. So when you get to that, that's one of the issues that Jeff has highlighted. And so, you know, some input from you about how to address it, but it should be addressed as part of the four dune management plan.
Thank you, Bill.
Mayor, I also wanted to say that it was brought up also earlier about Mark Barnes had inserted somewhere back in earlier drafts, and I did research that and did look back, and it had been, at least Chapman Point was part of that by title. The only reference I find left within our current changes is in comprehensive plan policy amendments, number ten, four dune management states, and it doesn't specifically say Chapman Point, but it does say four dune grading plans must be adopted as a comprehensive plan amendment prior to permitting four dune grading outside of the Breaker Point sand management area or Presidential Street sand management area, which is more specific than it had been before, stating that if it's, if you do present one, I think you had one testimony tonight saying it wasn't very clear. It wasn't very clear, and I think this is still a little remnant of what had been introduced during the planning commission phase, but the only thing left from that.
Okay. I will ask the council to consider the fact that we have representatives of DLCD and state parks here. If you have any questions or concerns that they might be able to address, now would be a really good time. Other than that, I would also like to, at this stage, discuss how we would like to discuss this. One thing that Jeff has put forward is, in his presentation, the list of topics. Personally, I think that would be the best way to address it. We go through. of what had been introduced during the planning commission phase, but the only thing left from that.
Okay. I will ask the council to consider the fact that we have representatives of DLCD and state parks here. If you have any questions or concerns that they might be able to address, now would be a really good time. Other than that, I would also like to, at this stage, discuss how we would like to discuss this. One thing that Jeff has put forward is, in his presentation, the list of topics. Personally, I think that would be the best way to address it. We'd go through each one of those individually. That would be my take. I am not 100% prepared to do that tonight.
I guess I'd prefer to see us do it by document.
Okay.
Because the documents are what we're going to be ending up with, what we're going to be working with. And we have draft language already for those documents. It seems to be easier to keep track of it by working with the documents, which each part of that still gets into some of the topics, well, all the topics, but it seems we have a better roadmap if we use the document that we're going to ultimately end up with in some form, amended or otherwise. So, I guess that would be my recommendation.
Okay. Discuss the topics. There you go. I'm not hearing anything.
I wonder if we should start with the topics first and then see how, what we decide in the topics fits with the documents at hand. I don't know if that's cumbersome, but it might kind of clarify where we stand with the various topics that we're dealing with.
That's kind of what I was thinking. I mean, the topics are kind of a general idea of how you feel about that topic, and then we can apply that to the document by going through the documents. I think this is going to be a, as almost everybody out there has says, is a very difficult decision we're going to make here. I would like to hear kind of an overview first, you know, and that's what I would be prepared to do tomorrow.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with it. As long as we, once we've gone through the topics, and we go back to these documents, these draft documents, and address it, and if we need to refer back to the previous discussion, the thing of this is getting, going to be a very long session, and I hate to see it broken up. You know, we retire after an hour or so because we're getting numb, and then pick it up tomorrow. I'd rather do it all at one sitting.
I don't know, my butt's numb already, but...
[laughing]
Anybody else concerned?
I would prefer to do it with the topics first.
Okay.
I think that's how I can best grasp the totality of the task. Ultimately, we need to wind up with the documents, and I would prefer to do it that way.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, at the workshop tomorrow, Ford Dune discussion is on that agenda. The rest of the agenda is relatively light. That was done purposely, so you would have time to speak tomorrow. So, I would say probably less than a half hour for the other items, and then the rest, as long as you want to spend on Ford Dune, you can do that.
Okay. With that, unless some of the council would like to proceed tonight, I'm, I would, I've got some notes here from tonight's discussions that I would like to process with my other notes from the previous sessions, and that way we can step into it tomorrow evening fresh. Are you okay with that?
I do have a couple of questions for...
Yeah, that's why they're here, so. Please.
Jeff, were you going to say something?
That was exactly what I was going to say. Do you have any questions of us or that you would want us to research prior?
I think for the, was it state parks, or is it state parks that were, okay, I see a hand there. And maybe, I don't know if you can help me with this or not, but there has been discussion about sand coverage of clams, and... Okay, I'll wait, I'll wait.
This one, no, he's listening.
Okay. There's been some questions about how much sand can cover clams without a death rate. They say that 12, if you cover it by 12 centimeters, then you have 100% survival, and 24 centimeters is more like 70% survival. Do you have any opinions about this?
Okay, for the record, I'm Jay Senowall with Oregon State Parks. I'm not a biologist, and I believe that reference to the depth of the sand in clams, that answer originated from Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. I don't think I'm qualified to answer that question for you, unfortunately.
Okay. Can you answer a question about if grading of sand occurs, where the best place to put the sand is? I mean, does the, does the state parks have any requirement as to where sand can be placed?
No. We react to individual applications, and no two applications for Ford Dune grading that I've seen in my five years with state parks have looked alike. Sometimes, the proponents or the applicants try to avoid putting the sand too low on the beach because, once it crosses about the 12-foot elevation, it would go into the jurisdiction of the Army Corps of Engineers, and oftentimes, the applicants don't want to have to deal with another agency through their permitting process, and they try to keep the sand up above that elevation to avoid the need for a permit from the federal government as well. So, we don't dictate where the sand goes. We don't have any preference. We just simply react to the proposals, and we hope that when we get those types of applications, that they're, they've already been previously approved by the local government, and that takes into consideration all sorts of, the local plan, most importantly. So, state parks, one of our findings has to be made that the proposal is consistent with the local comprehensive plan before it even gets to us. So, we really don't, we don't guide applicants on how to do this. We have them hire consultants typically to give them guidance on those types of issues.
Are there any kinds of examples of where you might deny a permit for placing sand on the beach?
Not for where the sand is placed necessarily. So, since I've been with state parks, the only denial that we've issued for Ford Dune grading has been at Breaker's Point, their first effort when I was new with the agency, and then they changed up the plan to address some of the issues that we raised and were the cause of the denial, and they altered the plan to be more in line with our criteria. And in the instance of the 2000, I think it was 2016 denial, the reason, the main reason for the denial was that we didn't, the agency didn't feel that the state, the dune stabilization component of the application was adequate to stabilize the sand. Does that help?
I think so, yes. I'll have to think about that.
Okay. Any other questions while I'm here?
Hi, Jay. Do you agree with Jeff Harrison and what he said about the permits having incomplete reports?
Well, I can't really speak to previous grading approvals before my time at state parks. I haven't spent the time to research previous permits. My time was focused on applications and permits before me after I got there. So, Mr. Harrison did raise an issue and questioned the adequacy and the timing of monitoring reports. I asked Bruce Francis to give me anything he had for post-grading dune monitoring reports, and he did give me, in an email attachment, a copy of a report that was dated February 2018. So, I can't really speak to the adequacy of that monitoring report. I mean, they offered a report. It's in the record. I put it in the file. I don't know why state parks didn't get it until just a week and a half ago or so during the course of this proceeding and discussion, but...
When was it supposed to be, two years?
Within, it's within one year of the grading, and my understanding was that the grading occurred in February of 2017, and the report was issued in February of 2018, the monitoring report. I can't speak to the adequacy of monitoring reports for under previous dune grading permits, though. I can't speak to that.
Okay.
Without having all the files available to me.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jay, I'm curious. Is there any place on the Oregon coast where their state parks, the beaches being, the invasive grasses are being removed and the natural gases are being replaced?
Not that I'm aware of. It would be, in my opinion, it would be a monumental task to eradicate European beech grass because its presence all up and down the coast. It's, it spreads in different ways, but it's so deeply rooted, no pun intended, on the Oregon coast. I mean, with intense management practices, perhaps at spot locations, it may be possible, and perhaps Cannon Beach may be a good test case to see how effective removal of European beech grass and replacing it with a native would be. But I would guess it would probably be a very expensive endeavor to try to eradicate European beech grass and keep it at bay. But if the, you know, if the dunes are managed, and the cost of that is borne by the property owners who it benefits, then I guess it's worth the experiment.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Hi.
Brandon.
Mr. Senowall, is there anywhere within the Cannon Beach city limits that state parks actively dune manages?
No. Well, we, Oregon Parks and Recreation Department manages the ocean shore in general, but the trigger for a sand alteration permit or a Ford Dune grading permit is anytime there's 50 cubic yards or more of sand. State Parks does own some dune areas where we manage our own dunes outside of the city limits.
Okay. But not within the city limits?
No, no, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Other questions?
Sure.
Thank you. All remain available if something else comes up.
Thank you.
Anybody think of a question for Lisa in the back?
I do. I don't know if this is in your jurisdiction or not. It does this, should I wait?
I listen and walk.
Okay, listen and walk at the same time. Some of us are really talented.
I know. I can't say that forever.
I don't know if this is in your jurisdiction or not. Do you know if the state has higher priority over deed restrictions of a development? I mean, if deed, if the deed restrictions restrict, for instance, a grading of sand, does the state goal override that?
So, my name's Lisa Phipps with the Department of Land Conservation and Development, and I'm trying to make sure that I answer the right question. So, if there is a deed restriction placed that says, for example, you cannot grade, and you're saying the state says it's an allowable option, does that, it doesn't. Those deeds aren't necessarily enforced by the Department of Land Conservation and Development. Their legal documents, their contracts bind one party with another, and so, we would not, we would not supersede that. You can always be more restrictive. So, that's what that situation would be.
So, the state really wouldn't have a say in that?
We would not step into that. Bill's much more...
And this might be a question. So, I'm going to take it out of the dune grading situation and do a more typical one. Let's say you have a, two houses next to each other, and one has a view easement over the other that limits the height to, they not, can't build any higher than 20 feet. Even though the city or state may say you can build up to 35 feet, that deed restriction, assuming the owner of what's known as a dominant estate enforces it, it doesn't matter what the city says you can do. The deed takes precedence in that type of situation, provided the owners don't get into an agreement where we're going to rescind the easement or whatever, what have you. So, the state and the city could allow greater things than private property owners agree to.
So, can you put that into the situation?
So, taking this back here, and this gets a little bit odd because it's a plat note that who the entity authorized to enforce that plat note is probably the city, which is the same one doing the regulations. So, the city could conceivably have a plan that allows for dune grading in an area where the plat restricts it, where you have an easement that says we're not going to allow it, with the idea at some point the city might rescind that, or authorize the amendment of the plat. So...
Bless you.
I bless you. You know, the plan could allow it. The plan could authorize that potential, but the plat note would prevent that from going forward without that being amended. Does that make sense?
Without what being amended?
Without the plat being amended.
Without the plat. So, then who would amend the plat? Would it be the city?
The applicant would come to the city and ask that a plat be amended.
So, that would have to occur before dune grading could be allowed at Chapman Point?
Yes. But the city could also choose not to amend the plan to allow dune grading to be consistent with the plat.
Even though Chapman Point was included in the overall beach plan?
Mm-hmm. You've got to include the whole area in the plan, but there's a whole bunch of areas at Cannon Beach that dune grading isn't going to be allowed. So, you know, Chapman Point could be one of those areas.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody have anything for Lisa? Nope.
Oh, what, I actually, for a moment, hesitated to raise my hand back there when you first called my name, so this is a relief.
Good job, Lisa. Any other comments, council? Okay, I'm, I think I'll just close tonight, but I want to thank everybody. This has been a very enlightening and, in some manner, enjoyable. Just to have everybody come in to speak and thank you, and I'm very pleased to realize that most of you realize how difficult this is going to be for us, so stay tuned. I will adjourn for tonight, and we'll reopen the deliberation tomorrow evening.
What time?
What time?
Five thirty.
So, 5:30?
5:30.
You gotta get to bed sometime. I wanted to review.